It's seven o'clock, we call a regular meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order, and ask that you join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll respect the flag.
My pleasure. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Father, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have students sitting?
We do, Mayor. Four or five, I believe.
We have, it's our tradition to recognize Wesleyan College students here first thing at the meeting, and we have a little task for you. We want you to stand up, face the camera, give us your name, where you're from, what your major is, please.
Tom Andrews, Wheeling, West Virginia, Secondary Social Studies.
Donna Blummer, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Sports Business.
Justin McAteer, Butler, PA, Marketing and MBA.
Chloe Gibson from Elkins, West Virginia, and Accounting Major.
Anyone else? You're welcome, we're glad to have you with us. Next is Joyce Harris Thacker. See, I can say stuff wrong, too. They're giving you the business right. Tobacco-free Parks and Recreations and the Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Both? Floor is yours. If you have trouble saying Red Ribbon, you can just say Wet Ribbon.
Please start with tobacco, and I have Amanda Hayes, who's also on our Tobacco Coalition here with us, and we have a few things that we want to share with you, and we are unrehearsed, so bear with us, but we do hope we'll be able to provide you all some good information once again, because we are back again, and I don't know where we can put those that might make them more visible. Can you bring it up here?
That's fine.
No, it'll probably fall down, and then I'll be in trouble.
You can balance it, you'll fit. That easel, does it not have a trail?
Oh, yeah. At the very least, we can put one up there, and the other's very similar. We have the opportunity to get these signs free to post in our parks and our recreation areas if the council moves in that direction. When we were here, and I don't remember how long ago it was, several months, but Amanda and I came as representatives of the Upsher County Tobacco Coalition, and asked that you all consider making the city of Buchanan's parks and recreation areas tobacco-free. And I understand that you moved that into the Consolidated Public Works Department, and first of all, I mean, we're here to see what the status of that is, and to maybe assist in helping that long, if we can. We, at the time, brought you all a packet, and the information has facts, and we want to go through some of those, just so that, you know, everybody's aware of why we're asking the city of Buchanan to take this step. And also, we'll be distributing some information for you all as we read through some of this stuff, and I brought a copy of a resolution or policy that has been implemented with the city of Clarksburg, and that was on April 21st, 2011. So I took the liberty of taking that policy, and it's in the manual here as well, and modifying this one to the city of Buchanan. Certainly, that's just a model, and I have that electronically, if you all will forward that, but I would, you know, then ask the city of Buchanan to take that and make changes and modifications, and certainly pass by your city attorney, and then ultimately act on making our parks and recreation facilities tobacco-free. So, I'm going to distribute these, and let Amanda give you all some information, and we'll distribute that information as well.
Tobacco use is the leading cause of disease and death in West Virginia. Smoking alone kills more West Virginia citizens each year than alcohol, AIDS, car crashes, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined, about 4,000 people per year. West Virginia has the highest adult smoking rate in the nation, 26.5 percent. Among adult males, West Virginia reports the highest percentage of spit tobacco use, 17.6 percent. 22.3 percent of all high school students in West Virginia smoke. Of West Virginia high school students who have ever smoked, 32.7 percent smoked a whole cigarette before age 13. One in four of all male high school students in the state use spit tobacco. Of those who have ever used spit tobacco, 20 percent tried it before age 11. More than 2,400 West Virginia students under the age of 18 will become new daily smokers this year. Given the current smoking rates, 46,000 people, your kids today, will die of themselves smoking. Supporting tobacco-free parks and recreation areas makes sense, because it sends the right message that tobacco use is unhealthy and unnecessary. Children who see adults using tobacco in public places are taught by example that tobacco use is acceptable and a cultural norm. Tobacco-free policies encourage young people to make healthy choices and teach them that smoking is not an acceptable behavior. Most school systems do teach kids about the dangers of tobacco use. Most parents encourage their children not to pick up the habit. Yet we send young people a mixed message when they see adults using tobacco, especially adults they think is positive role models. By eliminating tobacco use in community recreation areas, we are sending young people a consistent message about tobacco. Smoke-free regulations, public education, and community-based efforts like tobacco-free recreation can help to reduce the terrible toll of tobacco use in West Virginia. These are just a few more statistics about secondhand smoke as being harmful in outdoor settings. Policies, tobacco-free policies reduce litter and maintenance costs. Tobacco-free policies help change community norms. Policies provide consistency among community athletic facilities and groups. A tobacco-free policy creates continuity and eliminates confusion about which facilities are tobacco-free. Tobacco-free policies help break the connection between tobacco and sports. The tobacco industry sponsors sporting events and advertises at recreational events, thus guiding young people's perception of tobacco use. Secondhand smoke harms everyone. Secondhand smoke is a human carcinogen for which there is no safe level of exposure. Exposure to secondhand smoke has immediate health consequences, such as asthma attacks and other respiratory diseases. There are people in the community that cannot come to many public events because of the danger of smoking, because of asthma and other health-related diseases, that being out in the public, being around secondhand smoke, irritates them and makes them very sick. There's a movement in the community that they would really like to see passed this policy, so I ask for your support to do that.
Amanda, you'll want to have all of those and the websites that you can visit to get more information. Question?
I have a question for Chief Gregory. Is there any policy with the Buchanan Police Department as far as enforcing the age limit for smoking and cigarette purchase?
As far as policy, per se, now, it is state law. Smoking, underage drinking, whatever, we do enforce our laws on the bugs. It's unlawful for anyone under the age of 18 to access tobacco products, so we're certain to state law, we're enforcing.
There are strings set there for alcohol, is, are there ever any for tobacco?
We have them passed, yes, sir.
If I may interject, Upsher County participates in what's called SINAR, and that's with sending an officer and training underage youth into our establishments, and those are chosen at random, and usually, it's the West Virginia State Police who participates in that, and they go in and attempt to make a buy, and that's all documented, and Upsher County participates in that every summer.
What about at the high school, on the level of a high school? I know they've got kids up there smoking, I see them do it all the time when I arrive up there for events and stuff. There are children smoking cigarettes at the high school, I would imagine the middle school also. What's being done for that, Joyce, anything?
You would have to get that question to the board of education, or you would not know.
Last time you brought the topic to us, and I must admit, I'm quite in favor of such a policy, but I'm also not a smoker, never have been, and I really don't care for the smoke, and glad that our restaurants are smoke-free and so on. But that's not universally accepted, there's some folks in town that have made it pretty obvious to me and in the paper and so on, the last time, they thought this was infringing on their rights to smoke. So let me just do a hypothetical here. Suppose there was a portion of a park or a recreational facility or something where smoking could occur, is that acceptable, or are you saying zero?
I'm saying zero. I don't know how you, you know, enforcement's a big thing, and it's, we know that it's hard to enforce it. I think, you know, designating an area would be that much harder to enforce, in my opinion, than it would be to just declare the recreation and park facility smoke-free, and see how it goes. You know, certainly not out anything to try, and, you know, we encounter problems, and certainly, I can't imagine that we wouldn't encounter some resistance, and that's okay, too. But I think as far as the Clean Indoor Air Act that's been passed by our Health Department and implemented here in this county, and in our restaurants and other, you know, places of work, and public buildings, you know, I think that there's been run enough time that has gone by, that, and we certainly, and I, I would, you know, fully agree to the fact that we probably have, you know, in particular bars that are still, you know, have smoking going on, and I can tell you that anybody can register a complaint in that regard with our Health Department if they see that happening. But I think most of our restaurants would probably, and my belief, attest to the fact that it hasn't hurt their business, it's probably helped their business, because it's like Amanda read, there are folks that can't be subjected to the secondhand smoke. I am one of them, you know, and of course, it's personal to me, and I lost my dad to lung cancer from cigarette smoking when he was 61 years old, and that's been 25 years ago, and, you know, it's personal to me, and when I go to places even outside of restaurant doors and stuff, if there are people smoking, literally, I have to brush by and hold my breath, and, you know, that's infringing on moderns. You know, they can have the counterclaim, and they have the right to do that, but, you know, it's mine here, too.
I've been tobacco-free since November the 4th, 2002, at 4:30 in the afternoon. I can remember it very well, and for a while, there was, not a day went by that I didn't miss it. I don't miss it at all now, but I can tell you right now, there is no tobacco-smoke-free zone anywhere, because if you give somebody an area of the park to go smoke, it depends which way the wind blows, it's whether you've got the smoke going away from you or towards you, and I can't, personally, I can't stand the smell of the smoke anymore. I can smell it a mile away. I don't like it, I don't like my clothes smelling bad because I've walked by somebody, but, you know, we all have rights. We have rights to smoke, we have rights not to smoke. I think what it should be, that if we have the smoke-free zones in our parks, then the smokers out there should honor that, and be nice enough to go across the street or go someplace that they have to have a cigarette, the same way they do in a workplace, in a building, they go outside and even at 12 degrees below zero to have a cigarette. They'll either freeze to death or die of cancer, part of it.
Well, the fact of the matter is, there are other municipalities, Clarksburg, we be one example, that I've brought with me here tonight, and we haven't researched to know how many of them in the state of West Virginia have gone smoke-free in their parks and recreation areas, but we know that there are some that have. So, I suppose that we could check with them and see, you know, how things are going, but Ryan, another thing is the litter, you know. I'm here at Upsher County Solid Waste Division, we know that cigarette butts, and you know, I almost bet in our parks and our recreation facilities, that that's probably the most litter that you'll find, except for right around maybe the trashcan that somebody didn't make.
Joyce.
Those cigarette butts don't decompose, it's seven to 10 years before that happens, and then what goes, the poisons that are left in that residue, where does it go to? In our groundwater? I mean, we don't know, but there are other things to think about and consider.
Well, I, for one, would be in favor of trying this to see what happens. I don't know about the rest of the council, I have no idea. Give me up my support.
My question, that's why I handed that copy today, "Therefore be resolved that tobacco use is prohibited in all parks and other outdoor recreation facilities, etc.," would require an ordinance for us to effect that, would it not? I mean, this resolution would not...
My concern, I think this would be fine for a private business. You could adopt a policy and post it and the whole bit, municipalities, governmental entities are different. If you're prohibiting an activity, there must, in fact, be a criminal sanction that goes with it, and under Chapter 8, if we are adopting criminal sanctions, we have to do that by ordinance, two reading ordinance. And there are no sanctions in here, I mean, if we're going to criminalize the activity, if you get caught in the park smoking, and you're not allowed to smoke in the parks, and we've provided plenty of notice that you can't do that, I need some help. What do you want a first offense fee, $50? $100? I mean, I don't know, that's, I'm all for it, I support the council's movement in that direction, if that's where you want to go, but we need to think it through, and we certainly want it to pass muster with our municipal ordinance.
And that's really what we're asking, is to take those first steps, whatever's necessary. I can tell you that, that we distributed to you looks exactly, except for the changing of the name of Buchanan, or Clarksburg to Buchanan, what city Clarksburg adopted. Now, granted, it was their Board of Park Commissioners, but it applied to all of their parks and recreation areas and facilities, as far as I can tell. And, you know, might be an opportunity to do a little bit of research to the municipalities and/or county recreation parks for that matter, to see, to have passed policies and/or ordinances, regulations, and see if there's any law enforcement teeth that need to go into it.
Again, if you're pro-scribing, if you're forbidding a particular activity, there's got to be a consequence for it, and, for example, you've got somebody smoking in the park, somebody calls the police, the police show up, you're not allowed to smoke in the park, well, what are you going to do, what are you going to do to me if I don't, well, we just don't want you smoking in the park. I mean, there's got to be some consequence for it, and the consequences are what the state code provides, that we must do by ordinance.
How about Mr. McCauley down here, Section 2, Enforcement, Item 4. Any person found violating this policy may be subject to immediate ejection from the park and/or recreation facility for the remainder of the event. Would that be a consequence of it?
I'm a little uneasy with that, from a liability exposure perspective. Do we really want our police officers intervening to remove people from premises? That's a real gray area, Mr. Beal. I mean, I just, I'm not real comfortable with it.
Well, obviously, this is going to take some more thought and consideration, and Joyce, Amanda, appreciate you all coming, and I think this is an issue that weighs heavily on a lot of people, and I think from the conversation we're having here, that there's some interest, and we'll search into this a little bit. Rich just whispered to me, we can check with the municipal league to see what other people are doing with it, so we'll give it some research.
We appreciate that.
We've got all winter to work on it now.
I mean, we have to have a jumping-off place, and nothing that's ever good was ever easy, so we know that there's some work that'll go along with it, but I think it's well worth the effort, and we appreciate you all, your all's willingness to do that.
Okay. Want to proceed with your Red Ribbon Week?
Yeah, let's do those, chains and hats, and we're going to call up Tom Zikafus, and our children that are here, our real participants, and we're going to get them going.
Judy, I'm Joyce Zikafus, and I happen to be the counselor of Buchanan Academy Elementary, I'm very proud to say. And we always talk to our students about having the pride of being the only public school in Buchanan City limits, so we are really thrilled to be here with you. I have two students with me from Buchanan Academy, and we also have two students from Washington District Elementary, so we brought some people from outside of our city to help us as well. I'd like to read to you the city of Buchanan proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, and I'll do that first. Whereas Upsher County and the city of Buchanan value the health and safety of all of our citizens, and whereas substance abuse is a particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in these leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides, and whereas it is the goal of the Upsher County Red Ribbon Campaign and the city of Buchanan to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas, the Upsher County Red Ribbon Campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the use of illegal, or the illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas, there are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Campaign in Upsher County. The theme this year is "I'm Voting for My Future, I'm Drug-Free." Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of Buchanan do hereby proclaim October 22nd to 26th as Red Ribbon Week in Buchanan and Upsher County, West Virginia, and urge all citizens to join in the week's activities and to work all year long to protect our community from the dangers of alcohol and other drugs.
I would ask, I'd ask council for motion to approve the Red Ribbon Week proclamation, and the second. All in favor signify, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it. And it's a sign.
Okay, we have something we want to show you first, if that's okay?
You have one, Chris?
Yeah, absolutely.
Get a picture of that. Turn that around, so they can see us.
Okay, you sit down. Every year in Upsher County schools, we spend quite a bit of time preparing to conduct a great Red Ribbon Week campaign, and each year, we have theme days to celebrate different aspects of the benefits of choosing to be drug-free. And some of their students came with us tonight, dressed in their favorite Red Ribbon Week theme, and you will notice a little bit about that. Our Monday theme is Wear Red Day, I elect to be drug-free. Each school has a lot of kickoff ceremonies, and we do think, each school does things in their own way, but Red Ribbon Week starts with Wear Red Day. On Tuesday is Camouflage Day. That's actually, try your other one first, Emma.
Sock it to drugs.
Crazy Sock Day, that's a big one. Wednesday is Emma's other favorite day.
The Dumb and... Your choices are the key to your future.
Thursday is Camouflage Day.
Be all you can be, Camo Day.
And Friday is Teen Day.
Stay in the game, play drug-free.
There are just a couple of variances that the middle school or the high school are using, but all of our schools trying to stick together. We encourage you to follow our Red Ribbon Week things, and as a way of reminding you, we have some things for you, if you guys want to get in now. I do believe that inside of your little gift, you will find a Red Ribbon Week ribbon. Everyone in Upsher County schools will be wearing a ribbon, including bus drivers, cooks, custodians, and every staff member in the building, as well as every student in the building. I think you also have a Red Ribbon Week theme pencil, and then you also have a brochure just about the different activities that the Upsher County Red Ribbon Campaign promotes. And I think it's definitely important to let you know that many, many, many of the supplies that we use for Red Ribbon Week comes from the Upsher County FRN. We could not do that, we could not do that Red Ribbon Week without all the support that we get from the community, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys so much for what you're doing in the schools, and kids, you're a great example to us older guys, you know, too, so continue on with all the good stuff you're doing.
I'm proud, I'm proud the students, too, for showing up. Would they like to tell us their names?
You do what the Wesleyan College students do, tell us what your name is, face the camera over here.
Face the camera.
Jessica Lane, and I go to Washington District Elementary School.
Isaac Lane, and I go to Washington District Elementary School.
Emma Hicks, and I go to Buchanan Academy Elementary School.
I'm Dawn Ford Green, and I go to Buchanan Academy Elementary School.
If you get a chance, I encourage you to stop in Central Hall during Red Ribbon Week, because they really do join.
Did I hear that last year?
That's wonderful. We encourage you to stop off Buchanan Academy and see the themes going on there.
We think that it is so important for the community to get involved, so that the students get the message that, you know, we're here to support you all, so that you have every opportunity available to you to have a happy, healthy, drug-free life. Ask everybody to participate.
Thank you.
How often do you get to enjoy the jambes?
In public.
Bad enough in these shorts.
What's the dress code for our special meeting? Is there a crazy socks? We'll figure it out.
Let's take about a two or three minute break here and let these folks, if they want to go, go. Grass is trying to get their name and everything, and that's it. Not one that's already tapped out.
Cool, tall, and strong.
So what if you start?
There's always so much. Since we're on break, I wanted to highlight my, highlighting, it's our next destination graduation that's coming up. And also, the students at the high school are, if you wouldn't mind announcing that as well, are doing, that's the first day of Red Ribbon, they're doing a blood draw at the high school. That would be appreciated. One second, for sure.
I'm Wade.
I'm Mayor, the city council, appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight with a request. Before we get to that, I want to remind everybody, we have a blood screening this weekend. Rotary, in conjunction with St. Joe, is having at the middle schools from 6:30 in the morning till 10:00 in the morning. And it'll be up at Tri-County in Rock Cave, so for the healthier Buchanan, it fits in with Joyce's last presentation. So do, think of any of that if you can, it's real economical. And also Rotary, Rich reminded me that Rotary has also contributed to Red Ribbon Week. I will say that fast many times.
Don, let me just jump in there also. Joyce handed me this, the Buchanan High School gym, the students are offering a blood drive Monday, October 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to support the school's blood drive and donate blood. That's Monday, October 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. The main reason for coming forward to council tonight is a request from the First Baptist Church here in Buchanan that I'm a member of, and I'm speaking on behalf of the request. What we've, as a church, we were talking about the importance of the election coming up, and how it's a very, very important opportunity and an obligation for all of us to participate in the election. And this is, as much as any election, I think, for some time period, is a very critical and also a very competitive election on the national level, especially. And the thing we've talked about is the importance of that, and how we as citizens, and as members of our church as citizens, need to be prayerful of our decision, first of all, to vote, and encourage everybody to vote in the election, whether it's for a local election or a national election, say your national one. But I think it's the, to be prayerful that, not only to the obligation, opportunity to vote, which many countries in this world don't have, but also to be prayerful about the vote itself. And are we voting what our faith and what we should be voting, and the importance of that? And then also, sometimes the election may not turn out as we'd like it to be. And it's being prayerful about supportive of that election process, because it's such a, such a unique and cherished opportunity we have here in this country. So we talked about that as an opportunity to not only ourselves, but to encourage other people to focus on that, that opportunity for voting and the importance of that. And so we talked about getting together Sunday before the election, which will be the 4th, Sunday afternoon from 2:30 to 4 o'clock, we'd like to be able to use the Riverwalk Trail just around the softball field and the soccer field to have a walk where we would recognize that opportunity, come out and with friends, with people in our church, our community, it could be other churches, it could be students, whoever, come out and participate in this walk to be prayerful of that. And the thing that we, we have some refreshments there with hot chocolate or some, you know, cool drinks in case, hopefully it's, hopefully you don't need the hot chocolate. If we do, we'll have that for refreshments. And to have that chance to walk around the park, but then also, as kind of a recognition of the needs and the opportunities of our community, we're going, as a church, donate $5 for each lap around that park to be split between the parish house and Salvation Army. So if we have, if we say have 100 people, or 100 laps of walking around there, we'll do $500, split equally between the Salvation Army and the parish house. We've been fortunate with a lot of people donating money to our church, and we just had a donation recently from Darryl Adam, maybe, a few folks may have known them, really good citizens here in the community that have some money in the church for us to use wisely. And we think this is a wise use of our funds, to not only recognize the people who come out and are participating in this thing, to be prayerful and be asking God about, you know, what should we be doing, and how should we look upon the results of the election, but also, it's a way for us to contribute to really two very important organizations here in our community that really reach out to the needs of our citizens. And so we'd like to have the, you know, the authority to go ahead and analyze that, this is not, this is not a political rally, there's not going to be any campaigning there, this is something that we just feel it's a time for us as a community to come out and show our, how important we feel the election is, and to enjoy each other's fellowship and get a little exercise around the park and contribute some money to needy thoughts. Be glad to answer any questions anyone has.
You want to have any questions for Don?
No.
Don, thank you. This item appears in our consent agenda.
Okay.
And just a little later on, I'm sure it will.
Okay. And when we do it, I'd encourage everyone on the council and everyone here, anyone down the park on that Sunday, rain or shine, you know, whatever, we're gonna be, we're having a good time.
Take the kids away from the Baptist Church.
That's right. This is for a good purpose, you know, this is a good opportunity. And that's one of the things that, you know, we hope, we hope there's hundreds of people show up, and the more laps, the better. So, thank you.
Department and Board reports. Now, there's a, sorry, there's Christian Heritage Week proclamation, then your packet, I'm not going to read it, I have already, it's a mail proclamation as a matter of fact, of y'all knowing that I've done this, and this has been going on for some years now, and a number of governors since 1992 have signed this proclamation, and we share this with churches in the community. And it establishes in November, Thanksgiving Week, as Christian Heritage Week in West Virginia. So just, so you know that that's taking place. Department Board reports, Michael Dawes, City Administrator.
There's several items to talk about tonight. All have relevance. The first you have in front of you, the General Fund Financial Summer Year-to-Day for the first quarter ending September 30th, 2012 fiscal year 2012-13. Hard to believe, but we have finished one quarter of the budget year. If you'll note, the city's total first quarter revenue, $1,831.74. And our fourth quarter expenses, our $809,797.83, sorry, a positive net difference of revenue over expenditures in the amount of $191,033.91. Our total revenues are down $51,015.53. That's partly some grant reimbursements that we received last year, we haven't received this year, some of those grants ran out. While the total expenses are down $230,125.23 from the previous year, a big chunk portion of that is our CVB lawsuit that we paid out, expensed out last fiscal year. The total positive net difference is $179,109.70 revenues over expenditures in the previous fiscal year. And as always, if anyone on council would like a detailed revenue or expense report for any department or all departments in General Fund, just see me after the meeting, I'll be happy to obtain that for you. Several items again to talk about under Old Business. Just want to give you an update on the Brushy Fork Minor Boundary Adjustment Annexation Application. That annexation application was submitted to the Upshur County Commissioner's Office a couple weeks ago. The Commissioner's Office has provided us some feedback, and they're requesting some additional information for the application regarding some meet and balance descriptions. I have had an opportunity earlier this week to meet with Jay Holland, Dave McCully, and Matt Himes regarding the issue. It's not, it's not a major or significant issue at all. Just the Commissioners and Willie Parker would like to see this meets and balance description added. More specifically, Jay and Matt are actually working on this, and we hope to have this corrected and taken care of, and send back up to the Commissioners for full consideration. Under the West Virginia National Guard Armory and Conference Center at Brushy Fork, I have submitted the pre-application for the USDA Community Facilities Direct Loan Program. Our office is working on the actual application for funding, and we have to collect a variety of environmental, historical, and architectural reports that are already created through the West Virginia National Guard. These are essential in completing a portion of the application. Jay Holland is actually working on getting him an historical, environmental, and preliminary engineering report for our water line portion of the project. I'm sure he'll talk about that the next time he's here. In addition, I've been working with Scott Barnett, who's the legal counsel for the Guard, to draft a leasehold interest agreement between the City of Buchanan and the West Virginia Army National Guard. Now, I understand in conversations with him this afternoon that that draft is complete, should be getting that draft sometime next week. He'll be out of the office tomorrow. I anticipate having our attorney take a look at that, if there's anything corrected in the draft, or everything is fine, this will be before council for consideration sometime at one of our council meetings in November. This is also an important component to have in place in regards to funding. Under, another reminder is that we have a special council meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, October 23rd, at 5:00. This will be to discuss employees' health insurance. There is some information in your packet, I'd advise you to maybe take a look at that, get yourself familiar with the variety of options that we have, and just be prepared for a good meeting next Tuesday. Under New Business, Transportation Enhancement Grant and Gateway West Project, I had a meeting today with Jerry Ordle, Jay Holland, regarding submitting a letter of interest to apply for the Transportation Enhancement Grant for the Gateway West or West Main Street Project. As you'll recall, we're going to be working on the Gateway East or East Main Street Project, probably early next year. This letter of interest is due by November 15th, and this will be submitted by the deadline. Again, this is just a letter of interest, and we'll get some feedback from them as to whether they desire us to apply for this. At this point, there's no financial or commitment obligation to it, just a letter of interest. Another item of note, we received a letter from the West Virginia Division of Forestry in their Mount Near Treeways Grant. If you'll recall, Little Smith, probably mainly through Consolidated, we put in for a grant, if you will, for some trees. And we actually received notification that we did receive funds for approximately 240 trees. These will replace some of the removed trees for power lines and some utility work, and there'll also be some new plantings as well. This is at no cost to the city at all. We expect delivery and planting by the end of this fall, and we actually are not even doing the planting. So it's a really good opportunity for us to have a list of the trees, if anyone's interested in that, but there's roughly a total of 240 of those. Onto a very important issue that needs to be presented to council tonight, is a proposed water rate increase. At the Water Board, did hire an independent CPA firm, Teetrick &amp; Bartlett, to conduct a rate study and recommend any rate increase for the Water Department. The results of that study and recommendation were hereby accepted by the Water Board at its regularly scheduled meeting on October 13th. Since the board meeting, our office has held positive informational meetings with three of the four Public Service Districts, and the item is ready for council's direction. We did inform those Public Service Districts and gave them a heads up. We did extend the offer for them to take a look at some of the financial information and some of the findings from our independent rate analysis, but those meetings were positive, and we wanted to give them a heads up. Going to yield today, under his presentation, because understanding he has a memo, that will get a little bit more into the specifics of what needs to be done as far as council's concerned in regards to this water rate increase. And then after he's finished, I would request that council direct our city attorney to draft an ordinance for first reading for the proposed rate increase as recommended by Teetrick &amp; Bartlett CPA firm and the City of Buchanan Water Board. And that is all I have at this time. As we work our way through the ordinance, and we have our public hearings, I'll be happy to share any information at that board, at that public hearing, or any time before that, and as a result of the rate study and their recommendation. We're entertained any questions you may have now.
You want to get through your memo now?
Sure, Mayor, I'll read quick. This, of course, is going to Council, Mr. Dawes, and members of the Water Board. Waste Water Rate Ordinance Information. This memo will help everyone better understand the several steps the city will be required to undertake in the weeks ahead, to satisfy Public Service Commission rules and regulations. I spoke with PSC Staff Counsel Wendy Braswell earlier today about the process, and was reassured that there have been no substantial changes in PSC requirements since Buchanan's last water tariff filing in 2007. I also revisited the PSC's internet site and downloaded their checklist for water utilities seeking to increase their rates. Again, little has changed during the past several years regarding the necessary processes. I'm attaching four pages from the PSC checklist pertinent to Buchanan's water rate increase process. There will be both preliminary and final tariff filings that will include a dozen or more documents that I will prepare and file to comply with the PSC rules and state code provisions. Municipal tariff filings and rate cases are more involved than private utility providers, as cities are required to comply with both Chapter Eight, that's the municipal chapter, provisions, as well as Chapter 24, that's the PSC rules and regs. Since our rate study has been completed and pro forma information has been generated, and the Water Board has formally met and has recommended increasing water rates, the next step will involve the preparation and first reading of the authorizing ordinance. I intend to have the necessary ordinance ready for first reading at the council's November 1 meeting. The second of the necessary two readings will occur at the November 15 council meeting, preceded by publication of the pre-adoption legal notice and a public hearing at the outset of the November 15 meeting. Within 15 days following adoption, that is by November 20, the preliminary filing with the PSC shall be completed. Excuse me. Immediately following the ordinance's adoption, the Tariff Form 12 Notice, sometimes called the Post-Adoption Notice, will be published. By December 16, I will complete the final filing with the PSC. The new rates will be effectuated on January 1, 2013, or about five years and two months following the last water rate increase that was effectuated on November 5, 2007. The current water rates for all of the 398 PSC-regulated water utilities in West Virginia are available for inspection add, and I've provided you with the website. Currently, Buchanan ranks 40th and right at the 10th percentile among those 398 regulated water utilities. I took the liberty of extracting selected data from the PSC site and comparing Buchanan's current rates with 16 sister cities. And what you see is Morgantown being the only more affordable city, their rates are $15.48 for the first 4,000 gallons. Buchanan is second on that list, total rank of 40th. Most of those 39 ahead of us, aside from Morgantown, are small public service districts in outlying areas of counties. Among the major cities in the state of West Virginia, with the exception of Morgantown beating us by that 80 cents, we are the, right now, the least expensive city in the state. You see Wheeling, Beckley, Wearden, Martinsburg, Elkins, New Martinsville, Grafton, Bridgeport, Parkersburg, St. Albans, Lewisburg, Fairmont, Kingwood, Stonewood, and Phillippe, among many, many others, that already are charging rates, in some cases, more than... Currently, Buchanan ranks 40th and right at the 10th percentile among those 398 regulated water utilities. I took the liberty of extracting selected data from the PSC site and comparing Buchanan's current rates with 16 sister cities. And what you see is Morgantown being the only more affordable city, their rates are $15.48 for the first 4,000 gallons. Buchanan is second on that list, total rank of 40th. Most of those 39 ahead of us, aside from Morgantown, are small public service districts in outlying areas of counties. Among the major cities in the state of West Virginia, with the exception of Morgantown beating us by that 80 cents, we are right now the least expensive city in the state. You see Wheeling, Beckley, Wearden, Martinsburg, Elkins, New Martinsville, Grafton, Bridgeport, Parkersburg, St. Albans, Lewisburg, Fairmont, Kingwood, Stonewood, and Phillippe, among many, many others, that already are charging rates, in some cases, more than double what our current rates are. Look at Phillippe's current rate for water, $38.96 is what they pay for 4,000 gallons of water usage per month. That's quite a substantial increase over what Buchanan's rates are. I hope this information helps everyone to better understand the process involved with increasing our city's water rates. If any of you have any questions or comments, please contact me. I would just remind the council that probably 10 years ago, when the rate studies were done by the Public Service Commission in-house for a great number of years, they recommended to our Water and Sanitary Boards in particular that we'd be looking at rate increases on the average of every three years. The rate increase that was done five-plus years ago was the first one that we had done in, I think it was 15 years or longer. So this would only be the second increase in more than roughly a 20-year period of time that would be passed on to the customers of the Buchanan system. Something that's long overdue and I certainly support Mr. Dawson's recommendation and the Water Board's recommendation that I be instructed to prepare the authorizing ordinance.
Motion to authorize the city attorney to prepare the authorizing ordinance for the rate increase for water. It's approved. There's a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? No, all in favor of signifying so by saying I am not Joyce's disease. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. The ayes have it. You got it, Colonel?
Do we know where our revised rate will fall?
Eighteen seventy-six.
Eighteen seventy-six.
We'll probably live up to 53 or 54.
Chief?
Good evening. Police Department's been pretty busy with a number of items, a number of things going into the department. Some things to highlight tonight to report, as you saw Red Ribbon Week is next week. And as we have in years past, we'll be instrumental in working with this committee and with a variety of schools around our area to present the anti-drug and alcohol message to the students. At the same time, and it's always one of the busiest weeks for us when it comes to community projects, Halloween safety, the Halloween safety program that we've done for a number of years will be conducted next week as well. We visit all the pre-Ks and the Academy K through 2 to talk about Halloween safety in particular, stranger danger, and about 600-plus students. During this, we give out to the students reflective Halloween bags. The bags have a coloring book talking about Halloween safety and pencils and stickers and other materials that we give to kids just to promote Halloween safety. We're also, and I've talked about this a couple of times in the past, this Monday we began our partnership with the Middle School Gifted Program to focus on the unit that are in particular are volunteers from Westminster College through the scholarship outreach. Caitlin Brown helped to put together. And the unit focuses on investigation, a particular investigation of a crime scene that ultimately culminating in a mock crime, or I'm sorry, a mock trial. We're just going to follow from beginning to end. We began the beginning phases of this on Monday. We have another session tomorrow. If anybody is available, we pushed this out through the press, invited them to this event. With the mock crime scene itself will occur Monday, October 29th, right here in the city council chambers from 8:30 to 11:30. So they're going to bus about 25 middle school students down and unload that morning and they're going to spend the morning here going through what we've learned for the two sessions prior to that and actually processing a crime scene. What we do at this, again, will be carried through, and I believe it's the seventh week of the unit, there will be a mock trial. We're currently trying to arrange the courthouse facilities to stage this trial with city council, the city council room as a backup. So if you're in the area and would like to observe, invite you to come down Monday, October 29th at 8:30, in time between 8:30 and 11:30 to observe this. And then more, I just don't have the, I don't have the mock trial off the top of my head, but I should have another report before that occurs. I'll have that date logged down. We'll be able to report on that as well if you're interested in seeing the mock trial. And then finally, just as a public service announcement, if I could just put this out here, with this weekend coming up, it will be homecoming at Westminster College and we're currently working with Westminster Security. New Hall on Saturday at 9:30 will be renamed after the late Tom Dunn. And to accommodate this, we're going to have a road closure on Camden Avenue in front of New Hall as well as Raxton Street on the road that passes or goes right by New Hall. So that'll be shut down for about a half an hour during the ceremony. And that's all I have. I want to answer questions.
Question for Chief. Thanks, Matt. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sam Ledlow, City Engineer.
Report on the sanitary board meeting that we had this afternoon. We had further discussion of our NPDS permanent appeal. It is moving slowly through the process. I think I reported at the last council meeting that I attended that the attorney that we're working with, Appleall, had submitted a statement of issues. And earlier today, we had the opportunity to participate in a conference call between our attorney and DEP to review the issues that were identified in that statement. And DEP doesn't really agree with us. So we didn't anticipate that they would particularly. So it's a first step, preliminary step in the process and we will go on maybe to have further discussions. They were going to provide us some follow-up information. And there's a, actually a formal conference scheduled for late November. Talked about work on the collection system. We continue to work on the Mark Avenue sewer upgrade. It's steep, difficult terrain. Makes it difficult when we have wet weather, so there's been some downtime on the job, but it's going pretty well. We have, there's two legs to the sewer upgrade and we have one of them up to Mark Avenue and we'll start and go up the other side and then the weather won't be as much of a factor. We've had good cooperation from the Highway Department. Mark Avenue is a state highway and they've been cooperative with us on the project. We opened bids Wednesday, yesterday, for a new service truck to replace an existing truck that's worn out. And we, the low bid was presented by Jenkins Ford and actually it was a lower bid than the state contract price. We, of course, investigated that as an option and we certainly appreciate Jenkins Ford providing such a good price for the equipment that we need. If you've noticed, there's an area on Spring Street near railroad tracks, near the Salvation Army whistle stop that has been settling. There's some pipe failure on a combined storm and sanitary sewer in that area. We're monitoring that. There appears to be some fairly serious issues with that, which will probably prompt preparation of an upgrade project.
What direction does that run, Sam?
It goes from Main Street down toward the railroad tracks. We also have had some issues, again, late night.
Please say it, Scott.
MVA.
Reported that we were doing a repair on a cove on Jalbon Run near Myrna and Gum Street. We had another request for repair or report complaint of a pole failure. And there again, we investigated and there's some probable, and this is a strictly storm sewer, and the condition of that cove is not too good and not imminent failure, but something that we need to plan to attend to. We've kind of had a rash of these bad pipe situations. The force made coming into the plant, which is heavy Dr. Warren bike. We had evidence of a failure there and replaced about 200 feet about two months ago and thought we were at a, had a good endpoint for our repair, but didn't. And we've had continued failure there during the last two, three days of repair of another segment of that. We feel a lot more comfortable this time that we did have an endpoint that will be make the repair satisfactory. We are working on a couple of projects that are planned. We had a couple of personnel matters. We lost an employee, Steve Reed, who moved out of town away from Upsher County. We hated to lose Steve. The board did authorize us to advertise for someone to replace Steve. And Donald Tenny is going to Class II certification next week.
Big questions for Sam?
Thank you, Sam. Those of you watching us on Channel 3, Saul, and those of you out here saw Council pressing you'd have to leave, he's a volunteer fireman and you can hear the whistle going by. I heard him say as he's going out the door, MVA motor vehicle accident. And so that's why he goes scouting when the beep goes off. Tom or Kelly? Tom standing up?
I'm on the hot seat. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our biggest issue from the Water Board, Mr. Dawson's already brought to your attention, and I will only add to Kelly, and I appreciate that that process is a Saturday motion. In fact, the council is supporting the long rate study and we need to correct that. At the plant and at the distribution side, we have a number of things going on. I'd like to bring your attention first, personnel or employees, things we want to brag on a little bit. We've had some safety training on Kelly's side with pipeline safety, trench safety, things of that nature. Anytime we can send those employees out and get their safety enhanced, they bring that back to the group. It just promotes and enhances the safety as we go through our daily activities and we're thankful that those training opportunities are available. We continue our weekly safety meetings, called Tepic Safety Meeting, but programs like this enhance that. And we're real thankful that they get a chance to attend this. Kelly also would report that his new hire, Peter Reed, we put in place a couple of months ago, has went through training very well and he's now out on his own, making an impact without supervision or assistance from another more experienced operator. So that employee's doing quite well. And on my side, I have two plant operators I'd like to brag on. I did a new hire in April. He was targeted to be certified in April of next year. I'm pleased to report that he got certified two weeks ago. He's about six months ahead of schedule, maybe seven months. His training moved along well in advance of what we thought would be. Pleased with that. And then we had another operator who held a Class II certification. He was targeted to get his Class III water certification in January, where he got those last week. So he'd come in a few months ahead of schedule. Really very pleased with that. That brings us more in line with Health Department requirements for operator certification under drinking water. Kelly, during the paving of Route 20 out there, Kelly had shifted gentleman's schedule around the work evenings to assist the paving crew as they were grinding and resurfacing. That was to protect our valve and distribution line that's in place that's oftentimes right in the middle of the road or off the side of it. We got through that without any major problems, but we didn't take out any damage on the If you haven't noticed, this week Kelly's crew has been out flushing fire hydrants. We do that twice a year. It's a maintenance thing that we require to go out and flush and break flows through them and check flows and pressures. Kelly reported to me this evening that they're about a third to halfway through that process. So if you see water hydrants open out there and running, that's because we're doing a routine fall maintenance. That's a normal thing that we do. And then at the plant side, we also have a sediment basin that collects a lot of sludge during the treatment process. We pull maintenance on those in spring and fall. Yesterday, we actually drained that down, removed the sludge and settled inside of it and got it back. So yesterday we do so. So we've got some pretty serious maintenance stuff we're looking at and getting, taking care of. And that's basically all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Deborah Brocker had some family issues and called and said she couldn't be here to see him from Stockard. David?
Just a couple of free updates, Mayor. The electric ordinance is coming along slowly. It got trumped by water this past week, but Mr. Dawson's wanting to raise everybody's water rates. It's all his fault. The armory project continued to help Jay and Michael with very facets of that. We're going to take up a second reading on Ordinance 368 here in just a moment. And I've also started a little bit of research, looking at the cases arising out of Wheeling concerning the opportunity to require certain city employees to either live within the city limits or a certain mileage distance of the city limits, called Chief Tacey mentioned that at the last meeting. We're moving that along and I'll be meeting with Mitch probably here in the next few days to try to come to some understanding as to what he wants. As I suggested to the council two weeks ago, it might make sense to coordinate things with the Police Department and Matt Gregory too. So more to follow on that. That's all I have until you get into your second reading on 368.
Okay. No other correspondence that you've not been made aware of. Brings us to our consent agenda. It's minutes of the regular meeting on October 4th. Building and wiring permits, payment bills, early voting, parking requests, Academy School Street closure, approval of charity zombie 5K run at Riverwalk, approval of prayer walk at Riverwalk, approval of Veterans Day Parade November 12th, approval of light up night request for Jalbon Park. entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. In all favor signify so by saying aye? Opposed? No. Brings us right back to you, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second of a two-reading ordinance. As I described for you last time, it's a very small piece of property that's being traded for another very small piece of property as a practical matter. The spirit of this arrangement was effectuated 20-plus years ago, but this formalizes the opportunity to deliver the wirevers, the long-awaited deed. Ordinance number 368 of the City of Buchanan and ordinance approving the city's conveyance to Patty Joe Wiener of that certain lot, tract, or parcel of land containing approximately .48 of an acre, more or less, along the Buchanan River in partial trade and exchange for that certain lot, tract, or parcel of land containing 2,400 square feet or approximately 0.055 of an acre, more or less, and various other rights of way necessary to facilitate. 0.055 of an acre, more or less, and various other rights of way necessary to facilitate establishment of and access to a city sanitary sewer pump station. All of said real estate being situated in Union District of Upsher County, West Virginia. Someone did ask me, did you really mean to say Union District? Yes, it is across on the other side of the Buchanan River, not on the corporation district side. So it is mature for you to consider on second reading and it is certainly my recommendation that you approve that so that I can prepare the necessary deed for the mayor to sign and deliver it to the wiremakers.
Motion to approve, second and final reading, ordinance number 368, City of Buchanan. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor signify, so the same I.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Mobile food unit request?
Bringing this to council, it gets a little bit different than anything I've seen recently. We do require itinerant vendors typically door-to-door to come before council for permission. This case is actually a van, mobile food unit known as Spiced Ice, a mobile cafe. The folks that operate that unit want to be able to take it to various parking lots and other city-owned locations as well as private owned locations within the city to operate their business, not on a fixed schedule, but on a random schedule or as they choose to. So I thought maybe it might be best to bring it before council to treat it as a tenor vendor rather than what we've done for some other vendors, which is to rent them a fixed spot and they're at that same location all the time. So I offer that to you for your approval.
Y'all want to speak to this a little bit?
If we could just give you a general idea of what we're doing.
Would you please, yeah?
Thank you for that opportunity, Council. Yeah, we're Spiced Ice and what we do is gourmet mucus and gourmet hot chocolates. We have about 21 different flavors, sugar-free options. And we just love making mucus. And we noticed that the market out here, there isn't that much for it. So we just wanted to provide the means for that in the community. So we just wanted to ask your permission to be able to do that. There's some private businesses that have shown some interest. They are within the city limits. And also there are some companies interested in some catering. That's why we're seeking your permission from the council.
Any way to have any questions here? I don't think we... Where do you envision, give us an idea of where you're going to be planning to park and serve?
Okay. Well, what was that lot that you'd seen, you mentioned? Some of the city municipal lots, like for the Christmas parade out there on Main Street, there's a lot, if I'm not mistaken, that the city owns. So we can sell our products to the customers, to the consumers. The van's very small. It's about 20 foot long. It's not a huge trailer or anything. It's just a regular, it's a cargo van, high-top cargo van. So some of the smaller private businesses, we can fit right in a parking spot with the property owner's permission without obstructing the driveways or anything like that.
Red truck size? P-30 chassis? Is it like a, like a delivery truck?
Right, yeah, it's a Dodge Ram Van 3500. Yeah.
What's your play, Council? I really don't know what to do with this. This is, as Rich says, this is kind of unusual.
We've had these types of vendors before, but they've, we've typically rented them a space or two in a parking lot and that's their space and they pay a monthly fee. This is a little bit different. This is more like a door-to-door salesman in a sense. It's not exactly, but it, you know, they might be on your street, they might not, but it's not that much different than, say, an ice cream truck that drives around. But yet they're talking about parking in a city facility at different times. So I bring it to you for your approval, not primarily so you know about it. I don't particularly see any issue about it to have their permits from Health Department, but I, a pair of caution, I brought up before you.
I suppose any permission we would grant from council could be revoked if it became problematic.
I think as long as, if they're going to set up in a city parking lot, if they're in a meter position or anything like that, as long as they pay the meter, I might see some problems in the area you're talking about now is where, I believe is Spring Street and Main Street, the little vacant lot there next to the dentist office, if I'm not mistaken.
Most of that toward the streets reserved park?
I think that's all, yeah, like you say, most of it's reserved parking. I don't know whether there's any, I don't think there's any. Any plans to have anything in there during the holidays or not. Last year we had a huge Christmas tree there. But I, the other problem is if you're on Main Street, you're going to have to move every two hours.
Right, right.
Or at Jolboon, you're going to move every two hours.
And, and, but I certainly do welcome the, the opportunity to have some mucus. And where are your samples?
Actually, we did, we did intend to bring the van and we did bring it, but then the storm came in. So, and we have the generator, it's on the back of the van, it's exposed. I do have covering for rain and hail, but when the lightning comes around, we're a little nervous, so we thought to bring it back. But upon approval, anytime you see us, please come on over and we'll be on house.
Now, you're, you're aware of Festival Fridays. Have you ever been down there yet?
No, not yet.
Next year, consider that too. June through September, every Friday evening, you've got an opportunity to sell your wares to the public down there at Jolboon Park.
Okay, I'm entertaining motion to approve your question.
Need to ask the question first.
Please.
What's going to happen the week at the strawberry festival when the vendors have to pay this $600 to be set up downtown?
Well, you know, we kind of turned the city over to the festival association at that time. I think, I think you'd have to deal with them.
You would have to deal with.
You'd have to deal with them. And that would, that would be the exception. You understand that? Okay. And motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll move. Do you approve it?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor signify, so the same I.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Good luck.
Thank you, Council.
Comments and announcements, we don't have to listen today, Thomas, see.
I'm checking obsession.
Pam?
Do we, still you have a Christmas committee that will be coming to talk to us about the decorations this year or anything?
That's in process. They're going to have a light up night, November 24th, Jolboon. I understand the Christmas tree, there'll be one at the courthouse as usual. Instead of using the corner up here, they're going to decorate it wreaths and we'll decorate a Christmas tree at Jolboon.
Okay.
Along with some other decorations down there.
Okay.
That's in process.
What about some of the lights that are working downtown in the building?
They're working on those. They are having some difficulties, but the intent's to get those up and running actually before now.
And on that end, I'm still getting complaints that, I'm getting complaints, more complaints than not, about the four-way stops. I just want to see how everybody else is hearing.
I've gotten both favorable and unfavorable comments. Personally, I've made three trips the last couple of days up and down Main Street walking. I have not had any difficulty. I did notice one lady, when I crossed the street, seemed to be back about three feet from the edge of the street and kind of like, I don't know what to do. But I would encourage folks to walk into the crosswalk. I mean, you have, you got, you gotta be, you know, common sense about it. You gotta look around, make sure that somebody isn't about ready to turn or about ready to cut in. But I found very good response as you step into the crosswalk.
I'm hearing a lot from elderly people that are there, are, I guess they are a little bit afraid to do, you know, to stop and go when other traffic.
Yeah, I actually find it easier to cross now than I did when you had right turn on red folks turning the corner. When you theoretically had the right-of-way in the sidewalk from a stopped side street or something and they just seem like you're in their way if they're trying to turn right or left into that street.
Another comment I've gotten from several people is they are actually trying to avoid coming downtown then because of it.
I mean, that's why it's so easy to get that one through.
Well, well, I don't think we, I think we, you know, I mentioned this before, I don't think we need to wait six months to make this decision.
It seems to me, and what my observations are, that it's getting better. It's getting better. I see a lot more courtesy at those two lights. If I have a dig on the, on the thing right now is we ought to have Canola Street on four-way as well.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on that part. Is that a possibility?
Jerry's supposed to be talking to him. He's not here to see you, but.
I would like to see Canola Street start at a trial period for that too. I noticed, in particular, I noticed that people are pulling up to the light at Canola Street and if it's red, they're waiting and then they're going on through. Just like it were one of the other four-way stops.
That's right.
I saw three yesterday like that.
And I see people come up there and stop on the red and turn right out in front of somebody who's on the green because they think they're supposed to be stopping.
I had two or three people who initially were upset, but then actually come back and told me.
Right, I've had that too.
But they said, you know what, no, I'm getting through town quicker. And the comments I've gotten a couple of times have also been that if we could execute it, we'd be able to maybe after a test without the lights, that that might be what would make it easier for people to, to understand. I think there's still folks that are coming up on it and not sure what's going on with the light, but that would be down the road, I guess.
I initially, the first couple of weeks, I had, my total was eight people against it and two people for it. I now have about 12 people for it and 10 people against it that I've talked to. And, and like you said, John, a couple that were against it, once it's been tried, have turned for it. But I, I'm still in favor of doing the whole six months and not cutting it short. I think we'll find that people are going to initially accept. I promised my constituents I would do what they wanted and that's going by the amount of comments I get on this. And it's the only way I will ever vote on it, is the amount of comments. If today we vote on it, if I have one for it either way, that's the way it's going to be.
One thing I have noticed is certainly slowed down the truck traffic that comes through town. And that was, I was in front of the middle block, waiting on some folks to come visit town and there was a, one of these trucks that carries the logs who just came flying down through town because they had a string of green lights. It was a rainy day, like this afternoon, and they got down to the Canola intersection, light turned red, they slammed on the brakes and actually slid into the intersection. So the one, to me, very positive note is there may be an accident, somebody may get bumped, but traffic has slowed considerably to the point that I don't think it will be that serious if and when it happens. So I'm, I'm in, overall, I'm in favor of it. I'm not saying there's not some negatives, but I'm in favor of it.
I turned off there at Wendy's to come up Canola Street this morning coming to City Hall and I was come up to the Canola, there was six or seven cars backed up with a green light. I turned right, went over and come up and sprang and there weren't any cars there, they were all through the intersection, gone. I think we need to keep giving attendance. What else you have, Pam?
Nothing except if you can read that Joyce has asked this written out.
Okay. Joyce also left this at the Upsher County Schools Destination Graduation Forum. Please join us as we continue our community-wide discussion of issues and solutions to increasing the graduation rate for Upsher County students as well as other issues facing our schools on October 30th, 2012, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Chapel Hill United Methodist Church in Engel Hall. Who should attend? Students, parents, guardians, other family members, agencies, businesses, health professionals, professionals, educators, retirees, and other community members affected by or interested in these important community-wide issues. That is, again, October 30th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, Chapel Hill United Methodist Church. That's in ground floor off the park. John?
With Dave Thomas's absence, I'm just saying with all these music videos now and infrastructure. I have nothing to say. Nothing else.
Nothing else.
Why, I will. Just remind folks that early voting begins next Wednesday from 8:00 to 4:00. It runs weekdays from 8 o'clock in the morning till 4 o'clock in the afternoon. There's two Saturdays involved. One is Saturday, the 27th, and the other is Saturday, November 3rd. Saturday, November 3rd will be your last day to early vote. The Saturday times are 9:00 until 5:00, just a little bit later in the day. Will note that if you early vote prior to November 6th, Election Day, here regardless of what your precinct is, you vote at the courthouse. And there will be additional parking spaces reserved for early voters along Main Street during those time periods. On Election Day, November 6th, polls are open in West Virginia from, no, they're open until 7:30. I think they begin at 6:30 in the morning, if I'm not mistaken. You must go to your precinct, wherever that happens to be located, in order to vote. But all early voting is held at the courthouse. If you have any questions on that, call City Hall, we'd be glad to help sort out the details. I'd also mention that last evening, the Fire Department tested six candidates in the physical agility testing. I'm glad they were doing the testing and I was just standing there keeping track of the score because even some of the fellows in the best of shape were pretty winded, looked pretty tuckered after the eight-minute test. Of the six candidates that were eligible to take the test, we have three successful candidates and they will now advance to the written exam. And I was very impressed with the professionalism, the quality of the Fire Department staff that was there to administer those exams. Very well done. That's all I have.
Okay. I have just one item I want to speak to. We've had difficulty several different times with this sign issue. We don't know when to pick it up and that sort of thing. So I'm going to make a declaration here as Mayor, but we're going to be working on a policy about the proceedings of this meeting. And 698-3, which is proceedings to be opened to public notice of meetings. We're held to pretty high standards posting our agendas and those kind of things. But here it says that any governing body, this is in West Virginia State Code, Chapter 698-3, "Any governing body may make and enforce reasonable rules for attendance and presentation at any meeting." Goes on to say, "Provided that persons who desire to address the governing body may not be required to register to address the body more than 15 minutes prior to the scheduled meeting is to commence." So we're going to start picking this sign-up sheet up about between 10 minutes and five minutes till, and if people haven't signed in by that, they'll have to wait till the next meeting. And I want that, want to press. And I want that, want the press to understand that, folks watching on Channel 3. We're not trying to cut people off, we're just trying to get a little better organized. Some frequently asked questions that were at the end of the website here. May citizens and the media record meetings? People have cell phones sometimes or their own camera. And the answer to that is yes, they may. We cannot prohibit that. And another note of interest, I think, is that our governing bodies required to allow members of the public to speak at a meeting. And the answer to that question is no. The purpose of the Open Meetings Act is to allow citizens to observe the governing body for purposes of promoting transparency. However, it goes on to say, "Governing bodies are encouraged to have a public comment," period, and I do believe that we should. But we're not required to do so. And it says here that, "Article does not prohibit the removal from a meeting of any member of the public who is disrupting the meeting to the extent that orderly conduct of meetings is compromised." So we'll not tolerate that in the future, and we will collect this sign-up sheet between 10 minutes and five minutes till. Again, we encourage people to attend our meetings. We encourage people to present their issues, and we intend to listen to them, but we also are going to insist that it's done in an orderly fashion. Does anybody else have anything to offer? If not, then we'll stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming out. See you.